Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. This meeting is now called to order. Dr. Blau, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Heinrich.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Present.
Mr. Ressinto.
Present.
I am present, and President Weems?
Here, present.
We have four.
Thank you so much. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We will now move to item C of our agenda, which is the ultimatum office for Mr. Ronald Ressinto. I want to welcome Mr. Ressinto to the board. Thank you for joining us. I think I speak for everyone on the board when we say we are so incredibly pleased to have you join us with your skill set. We appreciate your background and your family, and we also thank your family for loaning you to us for this time period because it is a large commitment. We appreciate you for taking on that commitment. We know that it's a big deal to serve your community in this way, and so we want to thank you now and in advance for all to come.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Ron, if you'd like to come up?
I look forward to working with you. So if you'll raise your right hand, we're going to do your ultimatum office. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Michigan and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Farmington Public Schools according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Wonderful. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Awesome. We will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to amend the August 12th, 2025 regular meeting agenda to include the June 17th, 2025 special meeting in closed session, meeting minutes under the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to amend the regular meeting agenda to include the June 17th special meeting in closed session, meeting minutes made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mr. Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Is there now a motion to approve the agenda? Yes, Mrs. Heinrich?
I move that the Board of Education approve the August 12th, 2025 regular meeting agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended, made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mr. Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move to announcements. I first want to again welcome Ron Ressinto to the board. As a reminder, we had an appointment process this summer or late in the school year where we appointed Mr. Ressinto unanimously. I want to again congratulate him and thank him for joining us. I want to welcome everybody back to the school year. I know that school activities will be starting very soon. I look forward to opening day and all of the festivities. I also want to make mention that many of us have been really busy over the summer, although there's been a little bit of a break. I know our administration is really hard at work doing a lot of things, and I know that board members are also pretty busy, meeting with folks and also having committee members meetings. So I also want to thank my board members. I attended a legal update last week, or I watched the recast of it, and I wanted to just share with my board members that there was a lot of really great information that I'll be happy to share with you. Some of the slides were shared with us, but a lot of good information on several of the latest executive orders were discussed, information related to the letters to the letters to school districts regarding DEI were discussed and legalities surrounding that, lots of good topics and court rulings on transgender activities, so things for us to be considering, information regarding court rulings on parents' rights as it relates to opting out of curriculum, opting out of certain activities. And so I'm going to summarize some of that and give it to our policy committee so that our policy committee can start reviewing those things and make some recommendations on whether we feel like there are some updates needed to our policy in recognition of some of those more recent court rulings. There was also a lot of information presented on FERPA and information that parents should have access to, either proactively or be made aware of. There was some information on ORS retirement lawsuit, an update there, which was also very helpful. And then there was information related to student's speech and the First Amendment, and in particular, some court rulings on students who had materials on their T-shirts and what could be or could not be constituted as a disruption to the classroom and whether the administration has the right to sort of make that determination. Really, really good information, and again, I think something that we should be sharing with our policy committee, which I sit on, so I'll be happy to share that with the Chair of the Policy Committee. When it comes to committees, we are a little late in the year in terms of having our first retreat, which is scheduled for sometime after the school year starts, and so we'll start having conversations. I've already engaged with you about committee assignments and liaison assignments. We'll probably wait until that first retreat to get a better sense of what our plans are for the year so we can make a determination as to what committees we think we need to retain, add, delete, and then figure out whether we need to have some additional representation as liaisons, all of that sort of thing. I think that'll be a good topic for us, so we'll wait on those assignments for now and keep the current assignments in place. Does that sound good? Okay. With that, that ends my announcements. We can now move to public comment. So anyone interested in public comment, please submit your part in the ceramic box next to this scripture. During the public comment portion of our board meeting, members of the community are welcome to address the board. Each member will have three minutes to speak. There will be a timer on the screen. Please address your comments to the board and speak directly into the microphone on the podium. If your comment is related to a student or a staff member, please use caution in stating names of individuals where protection of privacy would be more appropriate. The board will respectfully listen to comments, but generally, the board does not respond to public comment. In some cases, it might be appropriate for someone to follow up with you to address a specific concern. With that, we will start with Mr. Lovelway. You are our first public commentator. Good afternoon, sir. You have three minutes, and you will be followed by Henrietta Forché.
It's better I start than Bill, but it makes the thing fall.
I just call them in the order that they're received, so we're going to call Mr. Lovelway up first.
Go ahead.
I'm talking about closing the reading gap starting now, not next year, now. Farmington Public Schools, and you have a handout in front of you. Farmington Public Schools has the cash to close its reading gap. Farmington Public Schools has a chronic reading gap affecting 1,884 of its middle and high school children, a persistent issue that threatens our academic success. As usual, I put my calculations, they're on page two. We can begin to close this gap this year by investing $5,660,000 to improve these children's future prospects. Parents and teachers will welcome this opportunity to advance the reading skills of Black and poor children. Page three has Dr. Coffin's presentation from May of this year, and I've circled what's relevant, which is there is a 21% gap between Black and poor kids and white students. Let's not send our graduates into the workaday world with one hand tied behind their backs. No excuses. We have the cash to act now. Where will Farmington come up with $5,660,000? Well, and this is on the fourth page. The 25-26 budget shows a fund balance at the end of June next year amounting to $36,712,000. Of that, $9,584,000 is pure cash cushion in excess of the district's stated 15% target. No problem. Should we worry because Farmington budgeted a $4.6 million loss this year? Recognize that's already taken off the fund balance. Last year, the original 2024-25 budgeted loss was $4 million. Now the district has revised it to a $2 million profit. I think that we'll see another $6 million swing next year. That is, I don't believe the budget. I propose that we schedule a meeting within the next month to review the budget together and identify actionable strategies for allocating funds to meet our needs in the reading programs.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelway. Next is Henrietta Forché, and then Eugene Greenstein.
Good evening, members of the Farmington High School Board. My name is Henrietta Forché. I'm here today to urge a serious reevaluation of the rigid college-for-all track that continues to dominate our high school curriculum. After watching the thought-provoking video titled, I don't know if you can see this or not, "The Dirty Truth About College," featuring Charlie Kirk and Mike Rowe, it's available on YouTube or wherever you view the social media. I believe that we are doing our students a disservice by failing to provide equal prestige, access, and guidance to skilled trades and alternative career paths. Mike Rowe points out that we've created a culture where we're working with our hands is looked down upon, where a four-year degree is seen as the only respectable route to success, yet millions of college students are now drowning in student debt, many working in jobs that won't require a degree. Meanwhile, high-paying, meaningful work in the trades, electricians, mechanics, welders, and healthcare techs goes unfilled. Charlie Kirk highlights how the rising cost of college, combined with ideological bias in academia, often lead students unprepared for real-world challenges. College should be one option, not the only option. I urge this board to consider the following. One, introduce or expand partnerships with trade schools, apprenticeships, and certifications. Two, encourage counselors to equally promote trade careers and entrepreneurship. Three, celebrate signing days for students entering trades, the military, or starting a business, just as we do for college-bound students. By broadening our vision of success, we can empower students to pursue fulfilling, debt-free futures tailored to their strengths. Let's be honest with our students. College isn't the only path, and for many, it's not the best one. Thank you for your time and consideration. I don't know if you can see this or not, but this is where you would find them, and it's very good, it's very thought-provoking. Yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Eugene Greenstein, followed by Mark Forché.
Good evening, everybody. Maybe it's afternoon. Welcome to the board, Mr. Ressinto. We look forward to your help in making a difference for our kids. I believe it's important to start the year with a focus on the important issues. As you know, literacy has been my top issue for a number of years. Moving phonics over the past year, two years in grades K to five was a significant step in our efforts to improve our literacy performance. I look forward to hearing the results of last spring's testing in regards to overall performance, year-over-year performance, and performance by school and student demographics. The data will help us on the road of continuous improvement. While we've begun to address K-5, when are we going to do the same for our middle and high school students? Can we be satisfied knowing that these not fully literate children are not going to fulfill their life potential? Will they be able to be lifelong learners? Will they be condemned to low-wage jobs because they can't meet the demands of the job market in the new AI world? Will their failure in society cause them to turn to crime? As I've stated on numerous occasions, graduating less-than-literate students is a crime against humanity. Speaking in round numbers, based on last year's data, there are around 1,800 sixth- through 12th grade students that need to be brought up to grade-level reading. It's been shown that one-on-one tutoring five days a week for an hour for 10 weeks can make a significant difference. The economics of remediation, assuming about $3,000 per student, is $5.4 million. Maybe this coming year, we can address half at a cost of $2.7 million. Mr. Lovelway just spoke to that issue, and I believe we have the funds to do this. And from my perspective, worst case, we'll have to raid the rainy day fund. Benefits outweigh the risk. They're basically one-time expenses such that in year three, we should be able to start building back a cushion. On one other point, there is data that says Farmington should be able to be in the top 10 in literacy in Michigan. Why would I believe that? To the note that I sent you by the email last yesterday, Steubenville, Ohio, with all its social and economic problems due to the loss of the steel industry, is leading the nation in literacy, and you've got the reference. At the very best, we should understand what they did and see what makes sense to apply in our situation. There are other school systems that have gotten good results that we should also benchmark. We need to learn and copy with pride from the best, which is appropriate. We need to be among the best, and we certainly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Forché, followed by Sean Black.
Hello. As you can see, this is from Bridge Michigan or bridgemi.com. Frustrated by declining academic performance in state schools, education leaders in 2015 announced an audacious goal. Make Michigan a top-10 education state by 2025. If 10 years from now, we're not a top-10 performing state, then shame on all of us, said then-state Superintendent Bryant Wiston. During the next decade, Michigan beefed up staff, increased free early childhood education, and opened its cafeteria for free breakfast and lunch, efforts predicted to improve learning. By the end of 10 years, Michigan boosted classroom funding by an inflation-adjusted $2 billion, $2,100 million, the ninth-largest hike among all states. And Michigan students fell further behind. One thing we can do is that the people responsible for education, educating Michigan children in public schools simply do not know how to do the job. One solution is electing a new governor, new legislature, and state school board that specifically commits to fixing education. And the teachers' union must also be recognized as fundamental in this failure, and they, along with subperforming districts, should face consequences. And John Adams said, "I must study politics and war that my sons may have liberty to study mathematics and philosophy." My sons ought to study mathematics and philosophy, geography, history, architecture, navigation, commerce, and agriculture, in order that their children have a right to study painting, poetry, music, architecture, et cetera. John Adams was reflecting on the sacrifices he and his generation had to make, focusing on war and governance, so that future generations could enjoy freedom, peace, and the ability to pursue arts, beauty, and knowledge. What you do here is all about knowledge, preparing children for all sorts of things, but as I showed you in the Bridge Michigan quote, it's not happening at all the way it should, and we're spending an absolute fortune, and we're not getting the results. And a lot of times, we're going backwards. So my own personal view is I hope voters will learn about what goes on in the school board, what goes on in the school district. It's not all just nice smiles. There are problems and vast expenses and questionable things that are taught. And for instance, last November, we had a millage, and we can't vote on that millage again until 2034. 10 years.
Thank you.
Perfect timing.
Sean Black, and then I believe this is Ivan. I apologize if it's Iva Padilla.
Good evening.
You were after this gentleman. I apologize. I was just calling in order. Thank you.
Can you restart it? She was talking over me. Whoever started it, can you restart it?
We'll give them back.
Thank you. First, I'd like to start off on a positive note. I'd like to thank publicly acknowledged my son and daughter's teacher at STEAM and at Forest Elementary. Ms. Gendrich and Ms. Felcher did absolutely amazing job with my children this year. We had a phenomenal experience, even though we had two pickups, it was still worth the experience that my kids had. Once again, my kids like to read, they like to do stuff. Even though they're playing with devices right now, that's typically not what they do. So I want to thank the teachers publicly for everything they did this school year. It was a fine school year. I'd like to welcome Ron to the board. Hopefully, you'll be a difference-maker and you'll be a voice for change. And I do have a couple. I have one academic question, I'll send it to Ms. Henry. She responded, but the response was, in my opinion, vague. I would like clarity. And the stat that I'm coming from is from MSTEP. 51% of students in grades 3 through 7 on average, and I've shared this with the board before, in reading are below grade level. 54% in math. African-American students, 70% are below grade level in reading, 74% are below grade level in math. I think that's unacceptable. Maybe I have higher expectations of what can happen in a classroom. Maybe that's just something that... But my question is, what's being done differently? The data trend has been the same. It's been either this or that, not this. So my question is, what's going to be different? What's going to be different for them? What's going to be different so I can keep them in this district? I won't have a Felcher and Gendrich every year. Now, while I'm really here, something was sent to me on June 30th that was deeply offensive, and you need to see my face and my expression and know it. I don't know if you proofread it, if you're okay with it. It caused a lot of anguish in my family over his birthday weekend. That's unacceptable. No way in the world should someone with a law degree question the intelligence of someone else. If I have an interaction with a district staff member, it's my right to say it was acceptable or unacceptable, especially when I have emails to prove it. With that being said, I have a suggestion. I believe that you're a writer by trade or something like that. I think it'd be a good suggestion for you to write emails to parents. They might come off a little bit better. The runs I'm getting right now are very harsh, and they feel personal when I'm the one going through something with my kids in the district.
Next is Ivan Padilla, followed by Chris Jagala, and I apologize if I am mispronouncing.
That's perfect. You could say Ivan.
Ivan.
Well, welcome, Mr. Ressinto. I think it's a new member. Thank you. My first time here. So my son and some of you are aware of my situation. My son is attending North Farmington Public School, and my son has been reprimanded, disciplined for reacting to another student's verbal abuse and mental abuse. The school report, you know, shows that there was acknowledgement of the situation from last year. Also, the school was aware that the two students, my son and the other student, have disabilities. However, they ignore the problem, they delay the action, or they were ineffectively or inefficiently interpreting the procedures because things escalated, and my son was repeatedly called, "You are an AI, and you are not Catholic." So this is a case of discrimination based on religion and based on disabilities. My son has ASD. The investigation shows, or doesn't show, root cause, doesn't show who initiated the conflict, and doesn't show the participation of the resource teacher who is instrumental in the investigation because that resource teacher is the one that told me who initiated the contact, the conflict, the other student, and what exactly the student said. So it was repeated, so until the point that my son reacted, then was he immediately disciplined. So now, the investigation only shows corrective actions towards my son, which includes a stay-away agreement, which includes changing his routine. I don't know how a student with ASD, I don't know if the school knows the ramifications, you know, a student with ASD changing their routine, you know, what the consequences are. So doesn't show anything. Why the school failed to identify the potential conflict when they heard? The first time my son reacted, he was disciplined. The first time the other student called my son, "You are an AI," I don't know what happened. But that is mental abuse to the highest level. It's target. It's not calling him dumb or any other stuff that perhaps students may call it normal. But in this case, it was target. "You are not Catholic." That is big. Then my son reacted, and then he was disciplined, right? Knowing that the other student also has disabilities, I don't know if the other student is in the special education program anyways, but regardless, knowing those facts, why the student delay effective actions. So now only they provide is accountability for my son and corrective actions. I didn't see any effort to identify gaps in the Farmington Public School policies because if you read the anti-bullying policy, it shows...
Oh, sorry. Thank you for your comments.
It has a lot of flawless there, so thank you.
Next is Chris Jagala, followed by Randolph Hall.
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Chris Jagala. I am the father of two students who are going to be at Wood Creek Elementary this fall. My one daughter is going into second grade. She has been there two years. Our experience has been great there. I'm concerned about the retention of staff at Wood Creek and the hiring practices at Wood Creek for a couple of reasons. Her teachers for kindergarten and first grade both left the school in the summer this year. That's concerning to me. That seems like Wood Creek is not desirable. They left for other positions within the district. Also, last year, we were friends with people in our neighborhood. Their son was in a fifth-grade class there. There was not a permanent teacher hired until two months into the school year. So I know that there's an open kindergarten position for this year. I hope not to see the same results as last year. I also know that for Wood Creek last year, there was not a full-time gym teacher hired for the entire year. There was a substitute and then a long-term substitute for that position. So my request to the board is that the situation at Wood Creek be monitored and made sure that, you know, candidates are being filled and also looked into as to why... that, you know, candidates are being filled, and also looked into as to why teachers are leaving the school. And that's a concern to me long-term with my kids being, you know, at there for the next several years. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Randolph Hall. After Mr. Hall, we have no further public comment. So if you're interested in making a public comment, please fill out the public comment form at the back of the room and bring it to the ceramic bowl by Mrs. Scripture. Welcome.
Thank you. I always think I'm going to talk too loud when I keep talking to these, but I'm going to start off briefly by something that was wrote out, that I wrote. I sent an email to the board earlier this year regarding hiring practices, specifically the administration. I started as I'm writing to respectfully inquire about the recent hiring process for principals, assistant principals in the district. Some people emailed me back on this board, very respectful, but one did not. Although I do not want to come up here and talk about my resume, but I am a education representative at a university. I work with University of Michigan with alternative route certifications. I have two master's degrees, and I'm a doctoral candidate. I have had the opportunity when applying here, not called, not given a screener interview, for three open positions that I've never received any call from. And in that process of that time, I was hired at Ann Arbor, Plymouth Canton, and had offers in DPS, and even Livonia. Some may say, "Why are you still trying to follow Farmington?" It's simple. I have three beautiful young daughters in elementary age that attend private school. And in the process of us needing a bigger home, because there's just not enough baths, my wife said, "Well, let's talk about schools, and what schools would you like to go to?" And I've always felt that Farmington had a community that was diverse, that my daughters could grow up in and enjoy, and still keep us close to the areas in which we frequent. The message that I received by Angie Smith that is not here, unfortunately, was very assaultive in nature and tone. And it started off as, "I'm watching the correspondence, and have you made this same inquiry to any other place that has not hired you?" She accused me of saying you were racist, which I never used any of those words. I merely talked about me being a board member of anti-hate organization nationally, as well as being a community member of black educators associations. And merely just provided that information to say, "As a black educator, I bring value." But I never received a call. Her response to me was, "We hire the best." I said, "How do you know if you've never given me an opportunity to show?" My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Any further public comment? Seeing no further public comment, the public comment period for this period in the agenda is closed, and we will move to items from the secretary. Dr. Blau?
Yes. The board received communications regarding office of head start notifications, July edition of the FPS IB Castle news, the website link shared with the board regarding Bridge Michigan, article link shared with the board from Bridge Michigan and Talent in Education, a video clip shared with the board, the dirty truth about college, the Board of Education correspondence list, and correspondence regarding attendance policies. The board acknowledges all communications and responds as appropriate. A list of correspondence is included in the board packet, which is available on the Farmington Public Schools website.
Thank you. Is there a legislative update?
Yes, I just wanted to share one piece of information, and that is that there is still no state budget breakthrough at this point, and that is problematic for us as a school district.
Thank you. We will now move to district updates. Dr. Coffin?
Thank you, President Weems. I too want to welcome you, Mr. Rosinto, to the board for joining a great group of people, and we're really thrilled to have you, your talents, and your expertise here with us. I'm so excited to welcome everyone back for the start of the 2025-26 school year. It feels great to get, again, have our buildings full of activity. This time of year always brings a sense of renewed energy and fresh possibilities. Each new school year is a chance for a new beginning, an opportunity to continue to learn, grow, and develop here. We are ready to get started, and as always, we know that success starts here at Farmington. During the month of July, I had the opportunity to attend conferences focused on district-level leadership. These experiences allowed me to learn about new strategies and create meaningful learning experiences for our students. Our dedicated staff have already been back, hard at work, getting ready for our students. This week, we welcomed our new teachers and staff during our new staff induction. It was wonderful just to see the enthusiasm and excitement of them joining our team, and we are thrilled that they will now be part of our FPS family. This Thursday, our leadership team will hold its annual retreat, will be focused on preparing for the year ahead and ensuring that we are aligned in our efforts to support our students, our staff, and our families. Next week is our Launching Learning Week. It'll kick off with our back-to-school celebration on Tuesday, and followed by our opening day on Wednesday. During this time, all staff will be back in the buildings, getting classrooms ready, participating in professional learning sessions, and ensuring that, again, we're prepared to welcome our learners. Our first day for students is right around the corner. We can't wait to see their smiling faces back in our hallways and classrooms, and we're really looking forward to a fantastic year of learning and growth. That's all I have. Thank you, President Weems.
Thank you, Dr. Coffin. We will now move to reports from board committees first. And second are the finance and facilities meeting. Mrs. Heinrich?
Yes, hold on a second. Okay. So while everyone was on summer break, the finance committee was busy working. So we actually had two meetings. The first meeting was on June 24th, and that was attended by myself, Mr. Thomas Hall, and Board President Terry Weems, along with various district personnel. The first thing we talked about was a potential bond timeline. And so the district is in the process of beginning early preparations for a potential bond proposal targeting the November 2026 election. There's an initial discovery steps that are already underway, and they include a meeting with representatives from Plant Moran Real Point, and they're assessing building utilization, enrollment projections, and facility conditions. And the goal is to gather all the necessary data in order to make an informed decision. The second thing we talked about was the June 25th, 2025 budget to actual update. Jennifer Kaminski in her business office started presenting budget to actuals on a quarterly basis, and it's really helpful for the board and the business office also to see where we were and where we are in comparing with the previous years. And so she shared a year-to-date budget update through May, and she showed that spending is generally on track. The other thing that we talked about was an update on the plan for a multi-use space at Farmington High School. And in June, Dr. Coffin shared that an update on the collaborative design process at Farmington High School said that there's a preliminary design has been agreed upon for a space that's going to be used during the day as needed in the evenings by the robotics team and used by students in classes during the day. And that was all that we talked about on the June 24th finance committee meeting. And then August 4th, we met again, and myself was present, Thomas Hall, and President Weems was on vacation, but she felt it was important and fitted into her vacation to attend the committee meeting. So thank you for that. The first thing we talked about was a bus purchase recommendation, and this is part of our bus process that we have Luke Cadeau presented a recommendation to approve the purchase of three buses. And this is going to be up for discussion at this board meeting, so we'll have more information at that time. The second thing was a Filter First Grant Recommendation. And this is really great. The facilities department is implementing a Michigan Filter First Initiative to ensure safe drinking waters in all the schools through the installation of filtered fountains and bottle fill stations. So basically, all the buildings in the district are going to have not only water stations that fill drinking water or water bottles, but they're filtered. And this is actually funded by a state grant of $771,849. And so the initiative really supports health, safety, and compliance goals. The early childhood center installation is already completed, and there's an October deadline in order to have that. So this is up for discussion at this meeting today. The next thing was talking about was the high school musical, or the high school music program choir dresses at North Farmington High School. For some reason, there was a human error, welcome to the human race, and so we needed, they needed an additional 120 dresses. And so this is going to be up for a discussion item today in order to supplement the dresses at North Farmington High School. And there's also a recommendation for the fitness center. Mrs. Hendrickson presented a recommendation to approve the purchase of new physical education equipment for the fitness centers at both Farmington and North Farmington High School. And the purchase is being made for the replacement of current equipment, which is close to 25 years old. And the equipment that's going to be replaced that is still in good enough condition to be used will be sent down to the middle schools to be used. And they also noted that this equipment is a much more durable equipment and much higher quality than what homeowners purchase for their home use, because this equipment is designed for continuous use all day. And the equipment that we have has been being used for 25 years, so there's pretty good life for that. So that, again, is a discussion item at this meeting. And the last, no, the second to the last thing we talked about, this was a really busy meeting, and we got it all done in less than an hour, in an hour. The facilities department is recommending replacing an aging Caterpillar 420E backhoe with a Bobcat skid steer. And so I really want to compliment Luke Cadeau and Mr. John Barth and the facilities department for recognizing that this Bobcat is a much better design, and so it's going to save the district money in terms of repairs, and it's going to be, offer greater durability and efficiency. We are getting a trade-in credit and deal pricing for this, and this is a discussion item also. And although it's like 90 degrees right now and it's really hot, it's just nice to know that, really, that's a big responsibility of the district during the winter to make sure that all the parking lots are cleared and everything. So this is an essential piece of equipment. And the last thing was, again, the Farmington High School Multi-Use Room Update. And so Bill Weinreich, an architect, and Matt Feldbach were a designer. They updated the committee on the 5,400-square-foot multipurpose space plan for the school's northeast corner. And so we were able to look at the schematic design, and there's going to be two sections divided by a folding partition for flexible use. And so there's going to be including classroom space and robotics space. And so this is... The bidding on this is going to be in November or December, and then the construction timeline I asked about is probably projected to be about 16 months. And so this project is being funded by the 2020 bond, so we want to really thank everybody for their work on that. It's been a long time coming, and although we want instant results, all of this bond work and all of these things take a long time as far as planning and bidding and construction. And all the right parties were involved in making the good decisions. And the last thing is Jennifer Kaminski provided an update on the employee health benefits and the associated cost, and that information's going to be shared after the upcoming audit. And that was it for the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Heinrich. We will now move on to discussion items. Dr. Coffin?
Yes, thank you, President Weems. I'd like to welcome Ms. Rhonda Henry, our Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Strategic Initiatives, to the podium to share information on the Emergency 15 Plan.
Good evening and welcome, Mr. Rosinto. Tonight, we are requesting the board's approval for their Emergency 15 Plan, a state allowable plan designed to provide flexibility in the event of unforeseen emergencies or special circumstances. This plan is similar to the one that we implemented last year and is included in your board packet for your review. Our experience last year with the Wood Creek emergency highlighted the need for having this plan approved before the school year begins. Having the pre-approved plan allows us to maintain continuity of instruction in case of an emergency beyond our control or a special circumstance, ensuring our students' education isn't disrupted.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
I have one. So fully appreciate that we were able to leverage that clause, if you will, last year in response to the Wood Creek fire. And I also am aware that in order to invoke that clause, we need to, as a board, approve this plan prior to the start of the school year. Appreciate, again, that we used it for the Wood Creek fire, and that was an emergency situation. I'm also aware that we used it once to introduce a virtual day. I think it was at the high school level. High school only, one day. And so I want to, I think I've received a lot of feedback on that, both positive and not positive. And I want to understand what plans, if any, we have to consider that again for this year as part of this plan.
I can answer that. Rhonda was just out here. So yes, that was, that's one of the areas we can do it is for some professional learning opportunities for our staff. I got the same type of feedback. One of the things I heard loud and clear from our families is they needed more of a notice if that was going to happen. So that's certainly not our intent this year. We've worked all year thinking of different ways to get that flexibility when kids are with us during the school day. So we heard our parents on that. This can also, it can only be used for emergencies beyond our control, so not snow days, we can't use it for that. And then testing days, and that can be an option, and we do hear feedback from that. But one thing we are committed to, if we have to use it, is that we would give our parents plenty of notice so they could plan. But we did hear that feedback, so that's not the intended purpose right now.
That's helpful to know for me, is that that's not the intended purpose.
Any other thoughts, questions?
No, and just to, you know, because this is an emergency plan, then it's good to be prepared, and I thank the district for having that. But, you know, sometimes you can't plan emergencies, and so even though we want to know everything in advance if a true emergency does arise, then the district really has the process in place and will be able to act more quickly and efficiently rather than trying to come up with a plan without having that in place. So thank you for taking care of that.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Just to clarify, the Emergency 15, the E15, what does that entail like? Is it an alternative learning? Or how's that? So we can be this more clear in layman terms.
So the plan allows us for us to have a virtual day and count as a day. So what happens if there is something out of our control and we have to take our act of God days? We don't get additional days. So we would, if absent of this, and we didn't do the virtual days, we may have to extend the school year.
And this will only last for like 15 days at a time, correct? Or?
It's only 15 days for the entire district for the entire year. It's truly only for an emergency or from days where we, you know, what's allowable. But yes.
And it would also utilize our current learning management system, which is Canvas, as the avenue for the virtual learning.
So again, just to clarify, this was used last
So again, just to clarify, this was used last year when we had the Wood Creek fire. It allowed students to start the school year on time and participate virtually without having to extend the school year beyond June 12th or whatever the last day of school was. If we had, well, let me start over. We were allowed so many days to miss school for snow or unforeseen circumstances or whatever the case is, but if we missed too many days, and this has happened to me in one year, we had to extend the school year because in addition to snow days, it was a horrible snow year. We had lots of snow days, and in addition to that, I lived in a subdivision or adjacent to a subdivision which had frequent power outages. And so that combined with the snow days resulted in us missing too much school. So we were faced with adding days to the school year, which was very unpopular. No children wanted to stay in school for longer. How we, we were unique that year, though, in rather than adding days to the school year, we added minutes to the school day. And that allowed us to meet the requirements for the school year, but ordinarily, if you're not that creative and not able to do that, you would have to add minutes to this, you would have to add days to the school day. And in particular, for the Wood Creek fire last year, where we needed more than a few days to, you know, address that situation, we would have had to extend the school year for the Wood Creek students. And so again, this allows us to have flexibility in offering virtual programming in lieu of a present date for an emergency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Mr. Luke Cadeau to the podium as well as Mr. Barth. They're going to talk about the next three, so the review of the Filter First Grant. They will stay up there then for the bus purchase and also the backhoe.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Coffin. As mentioned, and Claudia did a great job as usual explaining what we talked about at the last meeting, so I have little to talk about, or Luke does. So with that said, we do have three items that are very, very important to Facilities Management. Luke Cadeau, that you've met before, is the new Assistant Director of the Department. He's been integral with this whole process with these three items. So he's going to present to you, and I'll be sort of beside to answer any of the questions that you might have. So take away Luke.
All right. Thank you. I just want to give everyone a quick rundown of the Filter First Program. So per the state, Filter First, we have to incorporate filtered water, bottle fill, and drinking fountains in all of our buildings. There we go. This is just talking about the act that was passed and everything. There was funding. We got a grant through the State of Michigan. Our grant was $771,849 that we were rewarded from that $50 million. Sorry, this is not the PowerPoint that I had, but it's fine. So I'm just going to go off of it. So basically, it covers all the drinking fountains. They're being installed by Guardian Plumbing, which is our contract plumbing company that we use. And then we're also using Best Plumbing, which is through the consortium, to get all the parts, and we're getting them at a good cost for the district and for the grant. Installation, everything has to be installed by the year, school year 2025, 2026, except for early childhood. That had to be installed by October 24th, 2025. So our crew actually went in, they did a retrofit on all the bottle fill stations. Best Plumbing showed them how to do it, and they went in and knocked it out. So FECC is completed, so we met that timeline. Whole point of, the whole point of it is, is to help with the health of our students, our staff, being fiscally responsible, improving the quality of the drinking water. Every three years, the water must be tested, sent to the state and everything to make sure that we're compliant. All the bottle fill and drinking stations must have the light indicator so anybody from the street can walk in and be like, oh, this water's tested, it's reading that it's half percent or whatnot. So, and then each bottle fill station must remove certain amount of contaminants per the State of Michigan. So, go ahead.
Couple of things to add to that, just so the Board's aware. This whole initiative came out of the Flint water crisis, particularly with in terms of lead and removing lead from pipes, which I won't say if I mean it has any buried underneath, but you know, most jurisdictions can do. So it was really a state initiative that was, again, put forward because of Flint. But on our part, we're doing 140 drinking fountains. That's a lot to retrofit in that short amount of time and document all this through the process. I do want to give a lot of kudos to both Lisa Boyce, who are Constabulary Services Supervisor, Assistant Supervisor, and to Chris O'Brien, who put that grant through. When you think about the award that we got, $771,000 out of $50 million, that's quite a bit. I mean, we, we got awarded a great bit of that money that would have gone somewhere else. So a lot of kudos, Chris, and to Lisa to get that funding. As Luke mentioned, this is going to be a year-long process, but it'll be less invasive than we think it would be, I mean, you might think it would be. But in the end, students will be safer, staff will be safer, we're guaranteeing clear water. All of the, all of the fountains that are not used for potable water will have signed it above them to not to drink it. So it was a good initiative to do. However, I do feel sorry for other districts that can't afford this type of retrofit. There are numerous. So Farmington was blessed in the grant that we got, and so we're going to put this forward and get it done as quickly as possible.
Thank you for that. I do have a couple clarifying questions. Can you describe what it is we're doing? So there's, are we replacing the water stations themselves?
So some of them have to get completely replaced. Some of them, there's a retrofit kit, so if it's just a drinking fountain, they can go in and put the kit on, so it's filtering the drinking fountain, but it also has the bottle fill option. But the ones, some of them, like the old porcelain ones, we have to completely remove and put a whole new bottle fill and drinking fountain in.
So you're saying that there are about 40 drinking fountains across our?
140.
140 across, and this covers the cost of all 140?
It covers the cost and Guardian Plumbing to install them.
And are we doing anything with pipes, or this is just for the water fountains themselves?
No, nothing with pipes, just the water fountains itself, and then like the little bubblers, like in some of the classrooms, they're being removed and capped, so they don't, they can't drink out of the sink in the classroom.
And why do we need to do this? Is there something wrong with the fountains that we have right now?
No.
There is not. And I mean, we are blessed in a district that has, you know, underground pipes that are, they're tested by the city. We're in good shape. However, the state can't pick favorites or not tell other districts not to do it, and they're telling everybody to do it. I just want to let you know that the state mandate says we have to have one drinking fountain filtered for every 100 staff or students. So when you think about that at North Farmington, that could be 14 or 15 of these things that have to be retrofitted. Some of them we have already in place. Remember, we have some of the LK filters already, but there's quite a few that we have to retrofit or take out of service, like in the classrooms, like we mentioned.
That's helpful. Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
No, I just want to thank you for doing this, because I think it's long overdue. So I'm glad that we're finally doing it, and thank you for getting the grant and covering the costs. So I think it's a win-win for our students in our district.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the bus purchases. So we're looking to purchase two special ed school buses, 21 passenger, with a wheelchair lift, and then we're looking at one general ed bus, seats about 71 passengers. This purchase would be with money used from the 2024 MSBO Bus Purchasing Program. I know you guys got a memo. We are sticking with Hoekstra. It is a little bit more money compared to Bluebird, but we're trying to keep all the buses uniformed for repairs. Drivers know how to operate a Thomas versus a Bluebird. Believe it or not, there is a significant difference. So that's why we're sticking with Hoekstra. We're looking at $392,885 for the three buses. Again, we're looking at the two special ed, 21 passengers with lift, and then a 71 passenger general ed bus, which the addition at transportation to make the bays longer will be able to fit these new 71 passenger buses. Any questions?
I'm sorry, I do have questions. I feel like I'm on a roll, so why not? What's our plan with respect to our fleet? I appreciate all of the work that we've done over the past few years and the fact that we're now at about 99% complete with the replacement of our entire fleet. I feel like our kids are going to be safe with new buses, and that's great. I am wondering what our long-term plans are with respect to transportation and whether there's been any consideration, and I think we've talked about this a little bit, around either electric or hydrogen or, pardon?
Propane.
Propane. Just trying to understand from an environmental perspective and savings on gas, what is our thought process, you know, going forward? And when would we start that process?
So I can answer part of that question. Aaron Hill has been, Aaron Hill's respected throughout the state. He does training for the schools. Everybody in the state knows him. He's highly regarded in terms of what he knows, watching out what's best for not only district but for other districts as well. So that being said, we did look at, we are continually looking at electric buses. I will say there are very few that were purchased that are actually running right now throughout the state. They still have issues out there, so we're hesitant to do anything and commit the district's money to that yet. I mean, not that we wouldn't in the future. We've looked at propane, there are safety issues with propane as well. So again, we took the route that we have to complete our fleet, right? And so we built out the transportation garage to accommodate the 71 passenger buses, which will reduce routes, which is great. We're also adding the smaller transit buses for the afternoon runs. He's doing everything he can to keep buses rolling and yet transport all the special needs and athletics and that kind of thing. He is also looking at, like you say, the alternative methods of transportation. However, he's not ready to commit to anything. He talks to people constantly, they're bombarding with information, as yet they have not convinced him this is the way to go. Because again, these buses sit, they also, we don't have mechanics that can service them, that's another issue. So we're sort of staying the course right now, but we're sort of watching as things progress.
Thank you.
All right. Next, the backhoe replacement. So our backhoe is a 2007 Caterpillar 420E. We purchased it in 2010 for $64,000 used, and unfortunately, within the last year, three years, we've put $76,000 into it. So it's, it's not worth putting more money into this aging unit when it's a critical part of our operation in the winter to remove salt and load the trucks and everything so we can get all the drives cleared for the students. So with that being said, I've been in talk with Bobcat, my deal contract, they can get us a new wheeled loader for around $95,000. I did send over the quote and everything. Also, they're going to give us trade-in for our Caterpillar to put towards that, so the price will go down also with our trucks. I talked to Jennifer about when we auction them off, to use that money also to help offset the cost in that aspect. Like Claudia said, the unit we're looking at is more efficient, but it also, the engine's in the rear, so we won't keep running into these problems where like the Caterpillar, we've replaced, I want to say, four times the radiator due to the salt falling back into it and eating the life. It spends most of its life in a salt burn, and we all know what salt does to everyone's vehicles, so.
One thing to add to that, too, that Luke did mention, is that we, not only do we have a wash bay now, we will have shortly this week, a transportation of drive vehicles through, which is going to be great because it doesn't carry sprays, but we also added one of facilities in our wash bay that is a heavy metal strip that's what, 19 feet long with three 2,000 pound per square inch sprays underneath. So our vehicles kind of run back and forth across that. We've never had that before. Very inexpensive, well, $1,300, but it's well worth it because that's going to extend the life of these vehicles, including the trucks that the Board allowed us to purchase. So that being said, we don't see salt being as much of a detriment as what before, and this new skid steer will, will have the benefit of having that, that wash bay as well. So, and also Aaron was polite enough to invite us over. Anytime we need, I get our cars washed over there, we can take our vehicles over to be washed in a new wash bay. So it's all very positive. I agree with Luke, it's sorely needed. It does a lot more than even the CAT did, which is bigger but more intrusive to do things. So this will help the department out immensely.
Did you say that is, will be delivered before the winter?
So yeah, he said it normally, it's probably going to come from North Dakota, and they have them on the lot. He said max 30 days, so we should hopefully have it by November, so it'd be perfect.
And then does the quote include destination charges and all that?
Yep. The quote includes everything except for what we would get for our old Caterpillar, so, which we're still waiting on, so.
The only other question I had here was, I noticed that we're purchasing new, and the one that we purchased, I don't know, 18 years ago, was purchased slightly used. Was there any thought given to that?
I spoke to, when I was speaking to the dealer, the only reason why we didn't go used is just because you don't know what you're getting, kind of like what we got. I only went back three years and we put $76,000 into it. We went back and forth on buying used versus new. You get used, you're going to get somebody else's problem. So that's the only reason why we didn't go the used route.
Does this come with a warranty, then?
It does. It comes with, I can't remember if it was two-year or three-year manufacturer warranty. We can also purchase a longer warranty as well, so.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Is that something that we normally do, purchase extended warranties on our vehicles?
Normally, we don't, since I've been here, we haven't, so it's something to talk about.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. I would like to now welcome Ms. Margaret Hendrickson, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to the podium, and she will be sharing information on the next, the last two items, the high school music attire and PE fitness purchase recommendations.
Good evening, Board of Education. Welcome, and Dr. Kelly Coffin. So good to be with you today. This will probably be my first of a number of presentations to you, so I appreciate starting off the year strong. So one of the pieces that have been important to us is really ensuring that we're not only moving resource purchases forward in terms of core instruction, but also in our elective areas where we have really strong programming in the arts, phys ed, et cetera. So last year, I came for a music purchase of dresses for North Farmington and Farmington High. Unfortunately, between the quotes going back and forth between the company and our music department, there was a misrepresentation of the numbers in the final quote that was proposed. And so this came to light when we submitted our purchase orders in the spring that you approved. So we are coming to you to do an additional set of dresses specifically for North Farmington High School from the same company and the same specs. This increased number would increase the purchase by another $6,000. And so that's why we are here today and spoke to Facilities and Finance recently, and we wanted to bring it back to you since it was in close proximity to the time of the initial purchase.
Any questions on this one?
All right. Thank you.
And they'll bring up the second presentation. We'll move forward on the physical fitness presentation next. It's two separate slide decks. So we're coming to you today because we have fitness centers at both of our high schools, North Farmington and Farmington High School. The equipment that are in those physical fitness areas were purchased 25 years ago. They are commercial-grade physical fitness. So you're talking cardio when we're thinking about things like treadmills. These treadmills, these different pieces of equipment that I'll show you here in a moment, thank you very much for the, bringing up the presentation. These pieces of equipment are used throughout the school day for our active lifestyle classes, personal fitness. We also have an athletic conditioning class as well as advanced athletic conditioning. We use this for our IB program as well, and our sports teams use it before and after school. So it gets pretty heavy usage each day all year. It also is open to staff outside of school hours. So we are making a recommendation to purchase new physical equipment that is commercial grade, that because our current equipment is of this age. We did reach out to a consortium company and went with Direct Fitness Solutions, which is a specific distributor for Corbin Ward. This is an example of the actual equipment that we're purchasing, from treadmills to ellipticals to upright cycles to something that was new to me called an Air Runner treadmill. And so it breaks down in thinking of the physical space at each building and what each building needs. building needs. Farmington High's total is about $49,000, which includes shipping and installation. And North Farmington High School is $33,000, including shipping and installation, which means we have to take the old machines out, repurpose those that we can, recycle those that we cannot, and they need to come in and be professionally installed to ensure warranty and obviously safety. We want to make sure they're put together properly. So the Board of Education does have quotes for each of the buildings, which again includes shipping, five-year warranty, and installation. What questions might you have?
I have a question on the timeline because school's starting in a couple weeks. So when do you anticipate actually putting this in place?
So once we put the purchase order in place, they will give us an estimated time of delivery. They didn't expect in our initial conversations we had with them last spring that it would be any more than like eight weeks. What is nice is that we can get schools started, we can get students in classrooms, and then we'll strategically transition kind of in this overnight 24 hours, what I'm hearing is a two, maybe a two-day experience where they get them removed and get them installed. And so we'll know better once we have the PO, once we get board approval in September and we have the purchase order.
Do these come with warranties?
Yes, five-year warranties on parts.
I don't have a question at this time because I asked it during the finance committee meeting. These units seem really expensive to me. And so that was one of my questions, just so that the public is aware. You know, I came to appreciate that these are not the treadmills that I have in my home, that they need to be a different grade to support the athletes, multiple athletes that will be using them over a period of, you know, hopefully the next 15 years. So I get that. And I, you know, felt the need to go and look on my own to see like, is that really the type of expense associated with these units? And it was for me, so I satisfied myself there. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that those were the kinds of questions that we kind of ask at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting. Because this is, was pretty expensive.
Yeah. And we appreciate being part of, being able to purchase from the consortium because we are getting consortium pricing and not retail pricing from them. And we also were very specific in who we were purchasing from in terms of brand of equipment. We want to make sure we have a brand that has been longstanding so that we can get repair and support, as opposed to some companies that might come in and out of the industry every five or 10 years. So Precor is a pretty longstanding commercial product, and that was part of our decision-making.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions?
We can move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment. This is our second opportunity for public comment. If you have not had an opportunity to make public comment as part of the first round, you are invited to do so now.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Good evening, Board members. Good seeing you all. And Mr. Resinto, welcome. Excited to see you here and hope you do a lot of great things with this district. Kind of to get to the meat and potatoes of why I'm here. Obviously, I've been coming in week after week to advocate on behalf of robotics and getting that new addition added to Farmington as soon as possible. I was really excited to hear Mrs. Heinrich talk about some of the things that have been discussed over the summer with when the addition will be actually voted on and the rough timeline. I heard, I think, 16 months, which is great. It's what I'm hoping for. But again, I just want to kind of make it clear that we are hoping to get that done as soon as possible, just so that way the people who are currently on the robotics team, well, not all of them will get to experience it, some will. And, you know, just making sure that we aren't losing out on space. We did end up having to move all of our items out of the staff lounge at Farmington because it is no longer going to be purposed for the staff. And it is, I believe they said, going to be a counseling and testing room, which I'm a little unclear on exactly what that definition means. But it's just another spot where we have to remove all of our items and we're, you know, looking for that extra space. So, you know, we're just hoping that it comes sooner rather than later and that we aren't having to sacrifice more and more just to get this step in the right direction. In my mind, it shouldn't have to be two steps forward, one step back. It should always be two steps forward for the district as a whole. And that's, that's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Any further public comment? Seeing no further public comment, we will move on to action items. Is there a motion for the first action item relative to the Emergency 15 Plan? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Heinrich.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Emergency 15, E15 Plan 26 for the 2025-2026 school year as presented.
Support.
Motion to approve the Emergency 15, E15 Plan 20, for the Plan 26 school year as presented was made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mr. Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing no abstentions, that motion passes. Is there a recommendation for the approval of the Farmington Education Association contract? Mrs. Heinrich?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2025-2027 tentative bargaining agreement between the Farmington Board of Education and the Farmington Education Association, FEA, as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mr. Hall, to approve the 25 through 27 tentative bargaining agreement between the Farmington Board of Education and the FEA as presented. Any discussion? I just, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the parties involved for working together so collaboratively to come to agreement on this contract.
I echo that. And I just wanted to also thank the district and the FEA for, you know, negotiating good faith. I am happy with the outcome. I am obviously happy whenever we are supporting our teachers, especially at the lower level. We know the teachers are not paid well at the lower level. And so anytime we're able to address that, I think this board is pleased. I think that it's all of our desire to make sure that we are attracting and retaining good talent. And I think this contract puts us in that position and retains us as a premier district in that respect. So thank you to all involved.
Mr. Hall?
Also, with the, the new contract that, for the schedule, now that is, now we can not put the word tentatively, right, and actually put
For the next two.
Yeah. Because I'm, I was getting so many questions about that.
Yes, yes.
So we can move on now.
Well, if this board
Any other further discussion? Seeing none, we have a roll call vote for this one.
Yes. Mr. Resinto?
Aye.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
I myself am a yes. And President Weems?
I agree.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is items from the treasurer.
Okay. Items from the treasurer. I move that the Board of Education approve the expenditures as outlined in the expenditure printout dated August 12, 2025 as follows. General Fund, $22,318,117. General Fund Athletics, $157,357. Debt Fund, $2,038. Capital Projects 2020 Bond Fund, $811,081. Capital Projects 2023 Bond Fund, $10,639,693. Nutrition Services Fund, $276,684. Benefit Stabilization Fund, $2,943,978, for a total of $29,148,948.
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mr. Hall, to approve the expenditures as outlined in the expenditure report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. We will now move to the consent agenda. Mrs. Heinrich?
I move to approve the consent agenda. A, approval of minutes, number one, June 17, 2025 special meeting. Number two, June 17, 2025 closed session. Number three, June 17, 2025 regular meeting. Number four, June 24, 2025 Finance Facilities Committee meeting. And number five, August 4, 2025 Finance Facility Committee meeting. And B, personnel items.
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mr. Hall, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Are there any reports from board representatives? Mrs. Dr. Blau?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure everyone has on their calendars. November 7 is the toast to education by our Farmington Furniture House Education Foundation. That's a Friday, November 7, 2025, at the Meridian, 7 to 9:30 with a special VIP reception from 6 to 7 preceding the event.
Very good. One of my favorites. Before we move on, I wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Resinto's family is in the audience, and I want to thank them for coming and showing their support. Earlier today, we had the opportunity to swear Mr. Resinto in. And we mentioned that this is a tremendous act of service. And we really appreciate your, your family attending, for your family supporting him here. I can't say enough about the role of being a board member and the appreciation I have for my fellow board members. And I really appreciate families who are supporting their family in this, you know, act of service. So again, thank you for that. We mentioned that earlier, that we appreciate not only you, Mr. Resinto, but your entire family who are on board with you, you know, engaging in this service and sacrificing your time to be with us and to make a difference here. So again, thank you for your, for coming. We appreciate you.
Terry, can I get a comment?
Yes.
Okay. So first, I again want to acknowledge the significance of the agreement and really appreciate the board's support throughout this process. I don't know, I know the people at the table recognize that this is the first time in more than a decade that we've been able to negotiate a full set of subjects and that hasn't, that's now allowed, and requires a tremendous amount of time, care, and collaboration. I want to thank the board again for your leadership and support throughout this process. Your willingness to think differently, to stretch and to prioritize what's best for our students and staff alike really does make a difference. I'm especially grateful for the work behind the scenes to align our values with a responsible, sustainable offer, one that's both fair and forward-thinking. To our internal team, thank you. This work is complex and often demanding, and you showed up every step of the way. Your professionalism, your preparation and clarity allowed for us to lead with respect and integrity. And also to Mr. Paddock, your leadership was central in keeping us focused and grounded. And to everyone across all the departments, including business, HR, instruction, this was truly a team effort. So I just want to recognize the partnership with the district and the Board of Education and our partners in the FEA. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coughlin. Any further comments before we adjourn? All right, this meeting is now adjourned.